We'll let him catch up in a second, then welcome to the May 12, 2021 Provo City Planning Commission Meeting. We have two items on the agenda tonight. And before we dive into those, I'm going to get some housekeeping out of the way. Now, I assume we're still reading the statement relative to the Open and Public Meetings Act?
Yes.
Because we're not meeting in person? Okay, so, let me read this. In accordance with Utah's Open and Public Meetings Act, I have determined that conducting meetings of the Provo City Planning Commission with an anchor location such as the council chambers presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present there. These are the facts upon which I have made this determination. The World Health Organization has classified Novell coronavirus disease, AKA COVID-19, as a pandemic. The U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention state that COVID-19 is easily spread from person to person between people who are in close contact with one another. State Public Health Order 2021-5 addresses the ongoing COVID-19 public health emergency and establishes minimum standards to address the unique circumstances in different locations. Utah County is currently listed as having a moderate level of coronavirus transmission as determined by the state's transmission index metrics. Physical distancing measures will be difficult to set up and maintain in the council chambers and other meeting rooms. Therefore, for the next 30 days, all meetings of the Provo City Planning Commission will be conducted entirely via electronic means. These are broadcast live and available later on demand at youtube.com/user/provochannel17 and at facebook.com/provochannel17. Agendas and support materials are available at provo.org/planingcommission. To make public comment or to join a meeting via telephone, follow the instructions provided on public notices of each meeting. To send comments to the Provo City Planning Commission members or weigh in on current issues, email them at dspublichearings@provo.org. Okay, next, we will take a roll of the commissioners. Let's start with Deborah Jensen.
Deborah Jensen, no conflicts.
Thank you. Lisa Jensen?
Lisa Jensen, no conflicts.
Daniel Gonzalez?
Daniel Gonzalez, no conflicts.
Lori Urquaga?
Lori Urquaga, no conflicts.
Ryan Henry?
Ryan Henry, no conflicts.
Robert Knutson?
Robert Knutson, no conflicts.
And I am Dave Anderson. I have no conflicts and I understand that both commissioners, Jones and Phillips, will not be with us tonight, so we will excuse them. And go ahead and move to item number one. Tim Mettler requests concept plan approval for a 63-unit apartment complex in a proposed campus mixed-use zone located from 46 West to 90 West, 800 North. Mr. Ardmore?
Yeah, and if you don't mind, I'll also just read in number two, as they're related.
Thank you.
So that's the related zone change request from the residential conservation zone to the campus mixed-use zone located from 46 West to 90 West, 800 North, to allow for actually a 65-unit apartment complex in the North Park neighborhood. As indicated in your staff report, that's a 65-unit complex instead of 63. So here, I just wanted to kind of put up this map to start us off, wanting to show you what area is associated with this zone change. And just to show kind of its adjacency to campus. So here we have 800 North and going north and south here is University Avenue. BYU campus here starts with tennis courts and parking lot and expands to the northeast. So you can see how really close you are to campus area and all the residential student housing in that area there. If you go to zoning map, all of this area in kind of the deeper purple is our existing campus mixed-use zone. This is the campus mixed-use that the city went in with a blanket zone change when we adopted the zone back in, I think it was 2013-ish, as a way of implementing one of those implementation steps of the Joaquin neighborhood plan. Everywhere from 700 North up north towards campus between University Avenue to the west and 900 East to the east. All of that area that wasn't owned by BYU got zoned, campus mixed-use, except those commercial areas and the PF zone. So now we have this property here to the west of University Avenue that is asking for that same zone. Here, we kind of zoom in to the block itself. And a kind of overlay of the site plan shows you what that would mean for this zone and for this development plan on a conceptual level. Here, if we go back a page, back in 2012, this Prozone was enacted to do these condo units here along University Avenue. And you can see that on the site plan that the Foxwood Apartments, that is part of this rezon request, backs up to those Prozone condos, as well as this new development plan, which takes place of, oops, went the wrong way, which takes place of these four homes here that are existing in the RC zone that would take place. These two old homes along University Avenue are no longer homes. Their businesses would remain, and they would remain in the RC zone. But the apartments here and these four homes would be proposed to the CMU zone, and four homes would conceptually be changed to this apartment building. So we can go into the kind of the details of that concept plan. Overall, it's a four-story building that's about 49 feet tall, containing 65 one-bedroom apartments. And they're showing right now 106 parking stalls. And let me just kind of briefly go through a floor-by-floor analysis of that building. So one subgrade parking level that holds the majority of our parking stalls for the complex. So you've got 72 stalls there with access off of 100 West. Next level up is our ground level. So you've got the majority of our street-facing access with residential units, the leasing office, and a lobby. And then you've got the access to the parking garage, the main, the street-level parking garage off of 800 North. You'll notice in the CRC comments that I attached to the staff report that that is one of the comments that Public Works noted. So that may change when they come back for a project plan if the zone goes through. But on a concept, that's kind of what they're showing right now. You also will notice the storage, the bike storage areas are included in this first level. As you go up to level two is where most of the amenity space is located. You've got the main level courtyard or the second level courtyard clubhouse area, as well as a common area here. And that's surrounded by more one-bedroom apartments. And then the third and fourth floors are just mirrors of each other with a ring of one-bedroom apartments looking down to the courtyard below. Elevations are something that I had noted in my CRC comments are things that would have to be addressed in a future project plan if the zone was to go through the city council and get approved. These aren't matching some of the material and some of the design standards that we have in the CMU zone, so that could be addressed in the future. But conceptually, this is kind of what they want to look at, just a four-story stacked apartment building. And kind of variations in the paneling and the facades is what they've got so far. So these are your street-facing sides, and these are kind of back of building, if you will. Of course, on a project plan in the future, this would go through a design review committee and all that review. So the zone change, going through my staff analysis that you've seen the staff report, public purpose, getting a new density housing options near campus, meeting the kind of the housing goals of Chapter Three in the general plan. Staff felt that this area is adjacent to campus, close enough to campus to meet some of those goals. It kind of fulfills that need that the parking provided, provides enough off-street parking where it's not going to be a hindrance to the surrounding community that we've seen in some of the past student housing apartments built further to the east. Of course, there would be increased traffic, but nothing that staff sees as an issue with the zone change here. Overall, the concept plan fits with the zone. There are tweaks that would have to be made in the project plan, but we see this as a zone that makes sense for the area. And Steph supports the concept plan at this stage, and I would recommend approval of the zone change as well. So that's all I have for the staff report end of it.
Mr. Ardmore, thank you. Commissioners, any questions for Aaron? I don't see any hands, so Mr., well, sorry, I'm going to back up. We'll start with Commissioner Deborah Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was slow.
Sorry.
And there. I was curious if staff could address the rezoning of the two existing apartment buildings. Are there plans that you're aware of to redevelop those two buildings? And you know why they wanted to include those under the rezone?
As far as I know, there's not. The applicant might be able to speak more of a future to that. As far as I know, there isn't a plan to do anything with those. I think the idea behind that was just to get those in compliance. The RC zone is just a really restrictive zone. It doesn't really make sense for what's on the ground, especially within an apartment building like that. So getting it out of the RC zone and putting it in a zone that makes sense for the use allows them to have that. First of all, it's a zone that fits the use of the land. And if there were remodels or additions or anything like that, the RC zone wouldn't allow any changes to the building where the CMU zone would. That may have been some of the thinking, but the applicant may be able to shed some more light on that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Deborah, Commissioner Lisa Jensen?
I wanted to find out how staff felt about the CMU zone when there's not really a whole lot of mixed use going on, especially not commercial. Is that something that is, I know we saw a project further to the north a few months ago where that was something we were discussing was that there wasn't really any retail use in conjunction with it. It didn't really meet the goals of the CMU. Am I remembering that wrong?
No, so the CMU zone gives the option for a commercial mixed use. If you look at the Joaquin plan, there's areas where the CMU zone strongly encourages a commercial node at key intersections. But other than that, it's only an option.
Okay. So it's not like they're miss, like they're overshooting it by asking for that zoning?
Yeah.
The other question, I had two more questions. Are these intended for single students, married students, no students? Like, I'm just trying to evaluate whether the parking situation is actually realistic. How many renters do they expect to have in each unit?
So it's slated to be family housing, not student housing.
Then my last question was, how does the height, Mr. Ardmore, how does the height compare to surrounding buildings? Is it going to be kind of like that building on 9th East where it's right up against the street, really obviously tall, or will it blend in?
What they've shown in the concept would blend in.
Okay. How about the Foxwood Apartments to the north? How tall are those? Do you know?
Ms. Mettler, are those three stories?
So the Foxwood Apartments are two-story. The Foxwood condos on the other side of the block are three-story. And I believe the project right bordering to the east there, I believe is four-story, but I don't recall for sure.
Okay. I just was curious about how well it would, I mean, we're, I know the neighbors were concerned about getting rid of historic architecture. They just seem like generic historic homes to me, but I certainly wouldn't want to replace them with giant box towers. So I wanted to just make sure that it was proportionally, would fit in. That's all.
The houses that are there are pretty dilapidated and either in need of significant overhaul or replacement. And we just decided that replacement would be better. Considering one of the houses was built by a bunch of neighbors and church members, the construction on it is pretty poor.
Okay, Commissioner Jensen, thank you. Any other questions of staff from commissioners?
Ryan Asworth?
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, thanks, sorry.
Oh, you're good. Just had a kind of a follow-up question for retail. Was there any analysis done whether retail would do well there? And should we push a little more to have some ground floor retail on that project?
General plan doesn't call for it, so I think you're looking at a general plan amendment if the applicant pushed for it. So it's not something that staff would be supportive of, I don't think.
Oh, okay. Okay. And then just a comment on the architecture again. I don't think it's any secret that I really don't like this architecture. And was actually just reading today about this type of architecture and how studies are being done to find this architecture is actually detrimental to public health. The lack of ornamentation, the lack of hierarchy showing where the front door is actually creates anxiety in people. And I think this project was described on Provo Forward as a row of filing cabinets, which just, I don't understand why we keep seeing this type of architecture and what we can do to change that, to get a little more traditional styles. Because the paint-by-number look of this just doesn't excite me, doesn't make me feel like it's an inspiring place that somebody would be excited to live in. So that's my comment. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Henry, Mr. Day, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, it's kind of a side note is, this is an arterial road, 8th North is, and it's slated to become a five-lane facility in the future. So we will have to acquire some of the frontage of this property. And maybe Mr. Mettler could address that. But the city would be purchasing that additional property from the frontage of those units. And there's probably a way to work that out to where it works for both parties. So I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that.
Yeah, that was the one question that I had. In terms of the amount of additional right-of-way that's needed, what are we talking about? Is it 10 feet? Is it 20 feet? Is it?
It seems like on a preliminary design we did, it would be like 17 feet. But that, like I say, that's preliminary. We would have to work with the applicant later on to fine-tune that.
This is Brett Harris, the architect. We've looked at some concepts that have actually taken that into account, trying to still maintain the unit count. We're a little shy of where we're at at the 65, but we're going to go back into the parking regulations to see if there's any way we can decrease that just a little bit to help us keep the number of units. The building won't have that big center courtyard because of that right-of-way issue.
Yeah, and we realize that that would impact the development. But that, hopefully, that could be taken care of in the appraisal phase if, when we get to that point, so.
When you say the appraisal phase, you're not talking about an exaction to where the right-of-way would be dedicated to the city?
In this particular case, we felt like it was appropriate to acquire that property through an appraisal and a purchase rather than a dedication.
Okay, so then maybe an additional follow-up. I'm going to maybe go to Mr. Ardmore relative to what we're seeing on the concept plan, which it's kind of hard maybe to exactly scale off, but I'm saying maybe a park strip that I'm guessing is not any deeper than 12 feet, 11 feet, and then maybe another 11 feet of landscaping between the sidewalk on 8th North and the facade of the building. And I'm kind of wondering what impact a 17-foot additional roadway dedication has there from what we're seeing here? Just trying to get a feel for how real what we're seeing tonight is.
Right, and that's one of the main reasons I included that CRC report, which has those notes in it. So it has the Public Works note about 800 North. But it also has the note that I put in there from planning about how our director has the ability to adjust setbacks. So the setback shown here is a 20-foot setback from the apartments that they own to the north. They're all showing a heavy setback in the front. So I think we could deal with a lot of it through adjusting those setbacks. The applicant also indicated that they're dealing with it interior to the building. So I think through those two adjustments that it's still, there's reasonable things that we can do to accommodate the street that's needed through the project plan application in the future, I think it's still a doable project.
Well, I don't think anybody's going to question doable, but I mean, there are a lot of ways to, you know, maybe fit within a certain box. And unit count and different things like that come into play. I mean, eliminating something like what seems to me to be a fairly important maybe amenity for the residents of the project, you know, a courtyard on the interior and reducing the amount of landscaping that you have on the exterior, like what's shown along 8th North and those different types of things. Those seem like fundamentals that a planning commission should consider before they act on a zone change. So that actually is a fairly superficial concern of mine, so I'll just put that on the shelf for now. But Mr. Gonzalez?
Yeah, just the comment that it is a little bit hard to approve the site plan as is because, or the concept plan, because we are anticipating the 800 North widening and also in light of the comments the neighborhood made in regards to the And also in light of the comments the neighborhood made in regards to the losing street trees. Looks like they'll be lost at some point with the road widening. But it is something that's highly valued in the neighborhood. And I'd hope that, you know, I'm a little hesitant to approve a concept plan without some kind of assurance that there'll still be some street trees down the road.
Thank you.
We could adjust that as staff, there's always, there's going to be street trees. Of course, if they're widening the road, the mature ones might have to be taken down and be replaced with new ones. But that does happen with these street widening projects. It's unfortunate, but it does happen.
If I could add to maybe some of that, Aaron?
Yeah.
We are probably not in a position to do a widening for a number of years. And so I would see most likely this project being built with the current road the way it is and in the future it being widened. But merely just setting the building back to a point where when we do widen, that it wouldn't require any modification to the building.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of staff?
Mr. Chair, I have one more question.
Please.
For Mr. Day, on that proposed widening of 800 North, will that include buffered bike lanes like Bulldog Boulevard? Or will they be the more dangerous style bike lane or no bike lane? What's the plan for that?
The current plan would be to have the bike lanes on the road with a trail for the more recreational user on the kind of the shared sidewalk-trail situation along where the normal sidewalk would be. So there wouldn't be the buffered like on Bulldogs unless we were to acquire a significantly more amount of property than what we had planned. We have pretty established neighborhoods, you know, through this area. Unless we went in and bought, you know, completely one side of the road out, we would be unable to build something like that.
And will this include on-street parking with the widening as well?
At such point as the widening occurs, it would eliminate on-street parking just to keep the asphalt width narrower. So yeah, you would lose that on-street parking.
Okay. That's my questions.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of staff? Mr. Mettler, do you have anything to add?
We're certainly willing to comply with the widening of the road. But I guess I do question, you know, really the long-term feasibility of doing that. When you look at, unless the road's going to be jogged to the south, because when you take a look at the buildings and structures to the west of this project there, there on the corner, there's an apartment complex there. And then you go down a little bit further, there's a dental or medical complex which has a very small parking lot as it is. And then Gilbert and Stewart on that corner of 800 North and 200 West owns that building there, which really doesn't, you know, with where that it's already pushed up against the curbing there, doesn't allow for a whole lot of widening of the street there. So, I mean, again, we're happy to comply with that. But I really wondered about the feasibility of that, you know, making the modifications that we need to accommodate that because the feasibility of what's going to occur along, you know, the next two blocks or between 100 West and 200 West, I think is rather difficult to deal with unless the road is going to be jogged and pushed to the south there.
Mr. Day, do you want to maybe throw out a guess as to how much money has been spent? I think typically it's corridor preservation funds already to acquire property for the expansion of Eighth North?
Yeah, so, and I agree with Mr. Mettler in that it is difficult. But to the west of Second West, where the Utah Valley Regional Medical Center remodeled, they dedicated the full amount back onto their property. So from Fifth West basically to Second West, we have that alignment coming along mostly to the north. And then we're planning on coming back at Second West to more of having the center line of the current road be the center line of the new road and having property owners on the north and south share in the pain, I guess you'd call it. But yeah, I think we've probably acquired in the neighborhood of, oh boy, I would say around a million dollars worth of property, maybe a million and a half so far along this corridor to the west. As properties come up and people contact us and they say, hey, I'd like to sell my property and it's a property that we'll eventually need. We've used corridor preservation funds to purchase those. But those have to be used with people who are willing to sell to the city. It can't be a, I don't want to sell situation. So, but a lot of the people have went away from that process being very satisfied that they got a fair price for their property and moved on to a different location, so.
Yeah, and I guess, David, that is one concern that I have about where we're at just procedurally. In my mind, it's one thing for a public agency to use public money to purchase a property when there's no planned or anticipated or requested change of use involved. But this is a significant change of use. And I, on a lot of levels, I'm really concerned about the idea that public money would be used to acquire right-of-way that I'm used to having dedicated as part of the type of process that we're talking about right now. But frankly, I'm not sure if that's my biggest concern, but just wanted to share that.
Probably, based on what we've been told by our legal counsel, and if had this been like a collector or a local road, status road, we would have merely asked for the dedication. But where it is a master plan, you know, regional improvement, they've told us that we have to, you know, follow this other process. So that's the reasoning behind it anyway.
Yeah, I kind of assumed that was probably it, but I appreciate that. Commissioners, any other questions of the applicant? Commissioner Urquiaaga.
Okay, got to unmute myself. Couple questions. If the right-of-way is taken away, what kind of setback is there going to be between 800 North and the building? If they were to widen the road to five lanes?
It all depends on design, really, doesn't it? So with a concept plan, it's a hard thing to nail down. A concept plan is just that it's a concept that can totally change when they come back for a project plan. Right now, they're showing a 10-foot setback in the front and a 20-foot setback in the rear. So a combined 30-foot setback on the building on the north and south. So they have 30 feet of space to play with. And 17 feet of that is going to be taken. So if they stick with their current building the way it is, they still have 13 left. So where they put that, whether that's split between the front and the back, entirely put on one or the other, or whether the buildings change to provide the same 10 feet in the front or less in the front and more in the back.
How much is required? What's the required setback in the back or distance between those two buildings? Because they look pretty close.
So right now, they're showing 20. The minimum in the CMU zone is 20. And the minimum in the CMU zone for the front is 10. So they're showing the minimums right now. But again, the code does allow the director to adjust those. So we've noted that due to the circumstances that the director might be able to participate in those discussions with the applicant pending the decision by the city council.
I would hate to see something else like the building that is on 700 North and 900 East, which I think is one of the ugliest buildings in the city, that is just smack dab up against the road. And that possibility really concerns me. And then also the design, I would like to see some more. And I understand this is preliminary, but if this were to come back, I would want to see something that is more architecturally decorative than what we're seeing here. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Urquiaaga. Any other questions of the applicant?
I guess, Mr. Anderson, what I would say is we can work with the staff and probably try to adjust the building. And maybe there's some, you know, in lieu of the frontage that we're losing there, maybe there's some compromise that we could come to on the, you know, the front and the rear setbacks to try to accomplish, you know, so that it's aesthetically pleasing but still functional and still works for the adjoining property as well. So we certainly would work with staff to try to do that.
Thank you, I appreciate that and probably wouldn't expect anything else. It's my understanding, though, that relative to the process, at least this is what we've heard many times and I think is true, that the concept plan, that's kind of a courtesy description that we have of what a project might look like on the property. And that once the zoning is established, there really isn't a lot that the planning commission would have to say about maybe critiquing design, critiquing building orientation, or a lot of different things that we're talking about tonight. So the concept review item on the agenda, in my opinion, frankly, is fairly non-consequential. The zone change is where everything lies. And that's my concern with moving forward. You know, even just what you said, which, you know, taking that at good faith still, that doesn't provide us with really any assurance that any of the comments that we have denied are going to be included in a project plan that, you know, provided that it meets the city's requirements, it's going to be approved, you know, whether commissioners have objections or not. So I'm tipping my hand on, you know, one reason why I'd be very concerned about the commission acting tonight. But maybe we can talk more about that after we go ahead. And if staff will help us out to open up the public hearing, I'm going to suggest that we just have one hearing for both items if somebody has a concern with that. We can do it otherwise, but let's do that.
Okay, I have a neighborhood chair, Eric Chase. Eric, go ahead.
Hello, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm the neighborhood chair in the North Park neighborhood. I've been backing forth with the applicant on this. I know there might be some concerns about like the specifics of the site plan they've drawn up. But I feel like this, the property is in a good spot for this zone. I feel like when the RC zone was originally established, it got painted over areas that never should have been in an RC zone. We have lots of commercial and more identity properties that were put in it that just wasn't appropriate and doesn't allow the flexibility for those properties to be changed. I'm frustrated too by the city's plans to widen the road here. I think we're already seeing with this project that it's negatively impacting it. It's going to widen 800 North. It was taken off the transportation master plan for everything west of 500 West. My hope was that the transportation master plan would be changed in the future to exclude between University Avenue and 200 West. And I know that's not up to you guys, but I just want to point out how that decision is already negatively impacting our neighborhood. We did not have a neighborhood meeting on this, but we did post and publicize this in our neighborhood Facebook group and distributed it that way.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments now? Are people wanting to comment?
I don't have any at the moment, 30 seconds. No additional public comments.
I think you will go ahead and close the public hearing, both items one and two, and turn the discussion back to the commission. Commissioner Urquiaaga.
Thank you. I'm, I don't have any issue in general with campus mixed use. But I am concerned, given the city's insistence on the setback potential, that this particular plan is being sort of squeezed out. And I'm not comfortable with it the way it stands. I'm also trying to be sensitive to the request of the city staff that we make decisions preferably to continuing things. And I don't know if they want to speak to that at all. But I'm wondering how this impacts and how this works from the city point of view, depending on if we were to do continuance or a negative recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Jensen? Deborah?
I concur with Ms. Urquiaaga that I don't have any problem with rezoning this to campus mixed use. I think it's appropriate, given the existing conditions and its location and proximity to the other campus mixed-use zone and the university. So I don't have any problems with that. The site plan, that's a tough nut to crack because obviously it's been drawn without that right-of-way. Uh, increased right of way being shown. So what we're looking at is um. The initial concept and intent for the project. But uh, it certainly is going to change substantially, I believe, if, if the design has to accommodate. That right of way. In terms of the building's appearance, the setbacks, um. And all of those more aesthetic uh concerns. The campus mixed use overlay zone or zone does have specific design guidelines. And as I recall, those were um fairly rigorous. They require, you know, doors on the street and units facing the street and certain materials and. Uh, various other requirements that are more stringent than. I think they're more stringent than just even the commercial zones. Um, so I do think there'll be a fair amount of scrutiny as this design is further developed, especially in terms of. Uh, its site placement and uh elevations. And understood that, you know, the square boxy. Uh, apartment building look that we've seen across the country, quite honestly. Uh, kind of generically repeated over and over. Um. Is going to look very dated in, let's say, ten, fifteen years from now. You'll be able to say, oh yeah, that was built in, you know, twenty twenties. Because so many of them have been built. Uh, so hopefully the design review process would help uh. Would help drive the design and some improvements. Uh, I know they have to go through a little design review on this and there are design guidelines, so um. Anyway, that's my feeling on it.
Thank you. What's up, Brian?
Yeah, I, I feel the same way, um. This is a tricky one because I. I don't have a lot with the actual site plan that concerns me other than the architecture itself. I think what I'm most bothered about is the idea of widening eight hundred north in that area. Uh, several years, it has been several years, but not much has changed, but I used to work at Brick Oven and I drove eight hundred north from five hundred west. Practically every day. And I was almost always the first or second car at any red light, like there was never traffic, I never actually took eighth north because there was less traffic. And so the thought of widening that section of eight hundred north to five lanes baffles me. Uh, and so to, to place restrictions on this property. Given the fact that this apartment itself should encourage less driving, being so close to campus, that's putting downward pressure on driving. Cycling is becoming more and more popular and as we get the right infrastructure for it. I feel like driving is. Like this is the type of area where we shouldn't be encouraging more driving by widening roads that aren't fully utilized currently. Uh, I mean, I'd be curious, I don't know if Mr. Day has the traffic numbers for this section. But having driven that section of road over the years, I, I'm baffled that we would wanna widen that road. I do know there, the possibility of a freeway interchange obviously is gonna change everything. Uh, depending on where that freeway interchange goes, but I would just hate to hamper this project. For a road widening. That may or may not happen. Uh, and is there really enough pressure to widen that road? That we're gonna push this building back? And then down the road ten years from now, self-driving cars completely changes our transportation systems and the road never gets widened. Oh, I'm having a really tough time with this one tonight. But not so much for the building, again, other than the architecture. Uh. I guess those are my thoughts on tonight, I'm having a hard time approving this one tonight with so many open-ended questions. That's it.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Lisa Jensen?
I um, I think I agree with most of what's been said already, so I'm just chiming in to get a feel for how we all feel. Um, I think that the zoning is totally appropriate, I think that the building would be in the right place as far as. Appropriateness of land use. Um, I just hate to hold the property owner to uh. You know, a twenty foot on the rear, ten foot on the front setback and then take seventeen feet away and have his. Have his building be up against the street and so it, it seems unfair to him to make him move it back. Without secure um street widening plans in place. And it seems unfair to the neighborhood to not require him to have it already set back according to where the street would be because. Then they'll end up with something that's right on the sidewalk and. So I don't know, I, I'm inclined to think that continuing this would be more appropriate. Um, because maybe there's some discussions that we need to talk about freeway interchange plans and widening plans and um. And the timeline maybe a little bit more, it just seems. There's not enough information and it's not because of lack of effort on the applicant's part, it's just timing, I think. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Commissioner Jensen. You know, I, I don't really wanna go too deep, but um, my concerns really do have, I think, to do with how the zone would be used here. I feel like um, when we talk about zoning options, we're consistently just going to one end. Of uh, you know, maybe a palette that might exist that consistently. Involves adding additional renter occupied housing inventory and, you know, options for. Uh, for renting in Provo. Where, given that I think already the, the majority of um. Our housing inventory is rental units, um, the idea that perhaps it is time to. Repurpose the property for a different use. Um. I think given the changes that have already happened in the neighborhood, that's pretty easy for me to get on board with, but. Um, again, uh, you know, not uh, at least having, you know, some kind of mixture of units. Um, consistently not having, you know, the prospect at least or potential for. There to be owner occupied housing in a neighborhood like this. Um, I don't really buy into the idea that there's a dramatic, you know, consistently increasing need for housing in close proximity to BYU. Um, certainly not given the, the really significant amount of housing that's been added in recent years and I certainly acknowledge that there. There's a demand for housing throughout Utah County and all along the Wasatch Front, but I think Provo City. Um, has done its part to provide uh rental options and uh. Options for new, new homes in the community. Um, the idea that uh there might be a need to sacrifice setbacks. Um, to accommodate uh road widening, which. Um, I feel like I may be in a little different position because I've been in. A number of meetings going back a number of years now where Provo City has approached. Um, regional planning groups to solicit funds indeed to make this project happen, what we're talking about, the expansion of eight hundred west. Um, that certainly has led me to feel like it's a priority. And as even we've talked about things like making adjustments to Center Street to try to discourage. Uh, vehicular use of that as an east-west corridor. Uh, this is the only other one that potentially exists that could enhance. Um, the community's ability to get from one point to another. And I think that uh, you know, that's a global issue, kind of citywide. The idea that um, that land use changes along the corridor. Are somehow gonna diminish the need for people to get vehicles from one point to another through a city like Provo. For me is um probably not. Uh, a very, very realistic way to look at. Uh, one of the bigger issues I think that we have in Provo is residence and just the need that we have to, to be mobile. Um, I appreciate the idea that we don't know what the future holds in terms of. Autonomous vehicles and what that will do, but I think there's just as much. Likelihood that uh vehicle miles traveled will increase. When people can do that without giving thought to, you know, what it takes to make that happen as drivers and motorists and. You know, quite possibly there will be, be more cars on the road in the future, traveling more miles. You know, single occupant vehicles and that type of a thing, so I'd hate to make any land use types of decisions, including. Decisions about widening roads or the need for that based on a future that uh. From what I read is, is still very much so unknown and uh. Uh, that all being said, you know, I, I certainly have concerns with the project. Um, I'm as much as anything though, like has been mentioned already, concerned with. What I feel like is, is kind of a repeat situation that we're placed in, which is that we're given some imagery to look at and uh. Um. There's, there's really good reason to believe that it's gonna change maybe significantly. And that when it comes back to us, you know, we at that point, I think effectively are just rubber stamping things, so. Uh, that's my, my quick uh set of thoughts about it, um, I don't see a lot of other hands. Uh, two different items tonight, if someone's ready to make a motion, I'd suggest we start with item one. Commissioner Deborah Jensen?
Yeah, before we uh go into motions, I just wanna make one other comment um relative to what you just said and what we've heard tonight. If indeed uh, the site, the buildable site is reduced because of uh a right of way adjustment. And I would imagine the pro forma says, hey, we need. This many units on this piece of ground to make this pro forma work, so we can make money and have a successful project. What might happen is the site gets squeezed. And the building has to grow in height. To achieve those units and park it. So, I mean, that's something we haven't talked about. But the project could change substantially in terms of its height if the building footprint is squeezed enough. So just something to um consider.
I, I appreciate that, Deborah, and I appreciate your experience, um. I'll share some of mine really quickly, I'm not used to working. Uh, in situations where a developer's pro forma necessarily is tied to. City's land use decision-making, you know, for example, if. If uh this project doesn't work at thirty units. Then it simply doesn't work, I, I don't think the current land use necessarily is a problem for the community at all. Um, and if, you know, there's additional time, maybe that's needed to change the housing market or something like that. Um, to make it, it, uh, let's just say pencil with fewer units, um. I don't feel like there needs to be any, you know, urgency for, for the, the use of this property to change. Um, so I, I think it's much more important to get it right than to. You know, accommodate a developer's financial need.
I have a follow-up comment as well, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
Just to also address the idea of vehicle miles traveled. I really feel like it all depends on where we put our priority, if we keep building auto priority as the top priority, yes, people are gonna drive more. But if we start prioritizing bicycles and walking, which is what we're doing with this project, we're putting. A housing unit near a destination that people go to often. Uh, which is gonna reduce vehicle miles, I guess we just need to. We need to make a decision who we wanna be as a city. Do we wanna be a city that continues to encourage auto travel, or do we want to start allowing other modes of transportation? That are far cheaper, far safer and far healthier for the people who live here. And of any place in the city, this seems like a great place, I mean, we did the, the bike lanes on Bulldog. Was that just a, a happy experiment, but we're not gonna learn from it and try and do different things? In the rest of the city, I, I guess. I feel like we are. Uh, being a little bit bipolar on where things need to go and. The widening of eight hundred north, I think there's more of a case between five hundred west and the freeway for four lanes. But in my experience, I do not see a need to widen this section, given the traffic volumes and the pressure. To get BYU is pushing their students to walk more, ride bikes, they have, they're encouraging those kind of things. Is Provo gonna follow suit? Near BYU for those kind of things, so. And I know this doesn't have a lot to do with this gentleman's proposal, uh, other than. We could end up squeezing his project, but maybe we do shift priorities and we do focus on cycling infrastructure. That's quality enough that more people feel safe using it. Which is the number one critique of, of bike lanes, the dangerous ones, only those of iron stomachs will use them. But quality bike lanes are used by everyone. So I guess we just need to make a decision who we wanna be as a city, especially around our university. So, that's all I have.
Yeah, I appreciate that and I'll tell you, I, and I mean this, I really do appreciate your perspective, um. I would love offline to do a deep dive to talk more about what you're describing. Um, and maybe just simply put, uh. Regardless of what happens to transportation corridors around a trip generator like BYU. I don't think we're gonna see a predominance of people that work at BYU all of a sudden. You know, start to make housing choices to locate closer to the university because there's a bike lane or something like that. Um, uh, this might be changing, but, you know, at least half of the. The new housing stock that's being built in the valley, I think still is single-family homes. Um, if that's changed, it's only changed very recently, people are living in suburbia and they commute. Um, that's a reality, I'm sure at uh the medical center in the vicinity of this, that's the reality for BYU. Um, options for other means of transportation are very localized. And the need to provide for, again, typically a single occupant vehicle. Maybe as shameful as that is, that's the reality and I think that communities that plan for that going forward and, and understand that. That's the result of choices that Americans make in choosing suburbia over environments like this. Um, no amount of social engineering is gonna change that anytime soon. Um, that being said, I absolutely am a proponent. Of providing options and having complete streets and all those different types of things that make that a reality. Um, in this context, I absolutely take it as gospel that that's the plan because Provo not only has asked for money to make that happen, they've spent money. And um, I think that additional right of way that now absolutely somehow. Should be acquired with an opportunity like this, uh, in my view, would significantly. Impact the design in one way or another, so, so that's maybe my most uh immediate concern there. Uh, Commissioner Urquaga?
Yes, I'd like to respond to um Commissioner Henry's comments, I am a big fan of active transportation. And I agree that the students who might live in this um complex and probably it will be mostly students. But not exclusively students, um, would have an incentive to walk to work, but. As somebody who lives on the east side of town, eight hundred north is one of three corridors. Um, east-west corridors in Provo. And um, I think that it's busier now than um it used to be. Especially with the hospital there, um, especially since the um path through BYU was closed. Um. Frankly, if I'm going anywhere. Um, to the west of BYU, I either take eight hundred north or I take um University Parkway. And those are the only options that are there. And so I do think, especially if there is um a future freeway interchange at the west end of this, that. Um, it is going to continue to be a major traffic corridor for all that I would love to see. This be a um, probably be an active transportation city, this. There have to be corridors and um, we're not gonna get smaller as a city. So I do see this as being, um, having some pressure and I, I agree with um Commissioner Lisa Jensen that the applicant. Is being prejudiced by this, um, and that also makes me uncomfortable.
Commissioner Urquaga, when you say prejudice, help me understand what you mean by that. Commissioner Urquaga, when you say prejudiced, help me understand what you mean by that.
Negatively impacted by, in terms of his plans. Now, I think we have to plan, but I also, I don't like the idea of a building being on the street, but I also think that a 30-foot setback from the current street is going to look pretty awkward and I'm not comfortable with either of those.
I'm a little bit, I'm a little bit, a little bit worried about the idea that this developer's being negatively impacted by, like literally, I would see a regional transportation plan and, and Mr. Day, I would assume that the widening of 8th North is on that document, the regional transportation plan that's been adopted by the Council of Governments in Utah County. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think only if that were the case could, you know, corridor transportation funds have been spent on it. So with that being the case, before anybody put anything on a piece of paper relative to what the use of this property can be, they either took that into account and planned for the future widening of the road or they failed, in my opinion. And furthermore, one thing that's just really gnawing at me is that, you know, staff reviews things like this, typically vets them, critiques them and so forth, like we've seen, but I'm not used to, to projects getting through that kind of vetting without requiring changes to be made before they're presented in a public setting like this, you know, where they show that a needed road dedication has been accounted for. So that we're seeing something that indeed is, is what should very closely mimic, in my opinion, what we'd see when somebody submits plans for a project plan approval. But anybody that, in my view, is on the ball from a development or a design perspective has accounted for that and that's been worked through with staff before something gets again to, you know, being presented in this kind of a forum. So, you know, I, I don't think requiring that or expecting that of staff, of, of an applicant is in any way, shape or form out of line with best practices even, I would say, in terms of planning for transportation improvements and, and everything related to that. It certainly is a normal course of business for most community development offices in the United States, I would say. So no regrets there for me, except that I wish maybe some of that, that, that adjustment would have already happened before tonight.
I would agree with that.
So this is maybe the time that gets a little bit awkward. I've heard, heard the word continue a couple of times. Not to cut any discussion short, but Commissioner Deborah Jensen.
Yeah, I think Mr. Mettler had his hand up to speak.
So, Mr. Mettler, anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, we've been working closely with the development department on this project for quite a while. And the first time that this was brought up was the comments coming out of the CRC. And we asked whether or not we needed to redesign the project as having a concept plan prior to coming to this meeting, particularly for just getting concept plan approval and the zoning rechange, and we were told no, that we did not need to do that. Hence, that hadn't been done yet.
Okay, thank you. Um, you know, I expressed the kind of maybe bigger concerns that I have about the composition of the project, you know, it being homogeneous and, you know, and maybe adding a housing type that I, I think there are many other things that Provo City needs much more than this. That being said, assuming, let's maybe say that I was comfortable with the, with all of it, I think it's entirely appropriate for this to be continued so that the applicant can bring back a concept plan that accounts for the dedication of the right-of-way, that it maybe illustrates, you know, other changes that come with that, you know, whether it's, as Mr., I'm sorry, as, as Commissioner Deborah Jensen stated, you know, maybe a reconfiguration to increase height or any of those types of things. I don't know why else we would review these things, but to consider that as part of a recommendation on a zone change. So I, I think continuing this is appropriate. Commissioner Urquaga.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Please.
I move that we continue item one. Tim Mettler requests concept plan approval for a 63-unit apartment complex in a proposed campus mixed-use zone located from 46 West to 90 West, 800 North, to give the applicant time to look at a reconfiguration of the plan. And I would not say for continue to a date certain, but simply that continued until the applicant and city staff can come to an understanding that takes into account all of the CRC issues and the issues expressed by the commission, which was a really long motion, but.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Urquaga with the motion. Commissioner Gonzalez seconded the motion. Any discussion on the motion to continue item number one to a date uncertain? I don't see any hands. So back to the top of the list, Commissioner Deborah Jensen.
I vote aye.
Commissioner Lisa Jensen.
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Urquaga.
Aye.
Commissioner Henry.
Aye.
Commissioner Knutson.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. That takes us to the last item on our agenda, item number two.
I'm prepared to move on that too, unless Commissioner Jensen wants to say something.
Commissioner Jensen, Lisa.
I totally do, I snuck my hand in before I made a motion. I just wanted to mention in the chat comments, Mr. Gonzalez said there's some consensus to approve the zone, but still lacking consensus on the concept plan, even though I think we all agree that the zone is, well, not all of us, many of us agree that the zone is appropriate. I think that we've been taught by previous experiences that we really need to hold off on moving the zone until the concept plan fits it because it is our last opportunity to review it. So I don't know if that's useful just to remind us all that we've had these discussions before, but yeah, that's all I wanted to say about that.
I appreciate that, Lisa, thank you.
For some reason, I missed the stuff that's in chat, guys, I'm sorry. So please don't hesitate to call me out on that ever. And with that, are we back to Commissioner Urquaga?
I think so. In light of our action on item one, I move that we continue item two as well. Tim Mettler requests a zone change from the residential conservation zone to campus mixed-use zone located for the property that is located from 46 West to 90 West, 800 North, allowing for that 60 complex, again, to a date uncertain.
Thank you, Commissioner Urquaga. We have a motion to continue item number two. Do we have a second?
All second.
And that was Commissioner Henry. Any discussion on the motion? Once again, I don't see any hands, so Deborah.
Aye.
Commissioner Lisa Jensen.
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Urquaga.
Aye.
Commissioner Henry.
Aye.
Commissioner Knutson.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you. I think that is everything that we have for tonight. I don't know if staff has anything else to cover or if any of the commissioners have anything else.
I do not.
I would, I would like to just ask for the benefit of applicants as well as the commissioners that when these kinds of issues come up, that maybe things be delayed until the applicant has a chance to deal with them ahead of time. And I know we've dealt with things early in the past, but I feel like we're trying to make sure that things are ready before they come to us. And so that's just kind of a, a recommendation to staff to try to pull that together beforehand.
I know you work hard, so.
I was trying to do, Lori, and I can understand that. What staff's trying to do is, the whole idea of, of the concept plan is to save the developer money on the front end and not putting forth a whole project plan.
Right.
And the concept plan is, is really that showing that conceptual level of what could be provided in the zone. And you'll know, notice going through those CRC comments is, my specific language says this will need to be addressed in the project plan. So my, my request wasn't even saying, please revise this in this concept plan and send me a revision in this application. It's saying, adjust this in a future application. So that's why this was ready to move on because this, this specific application didn't need revisions. So that's, I think that's kind of where the, the, the things weren't coming together.
Okay.
I actually don't think that it was a problem to have it come to us, simply because it wasn't until we started talking about the road that we realized there was an unfair request going on there on, you know, they put the developer into a weird situation. So it's unfortunate that we didn't feel like we could make a decision, but I don't think we really would have thought about that if he, if we hadn't seen it. Maybe I'm wrong.
And in this case, I totally understand that you'd, you'd want to see that something that fits the zone still fits on this site with the expanded street. So I, I mean, I totally get the motion and it, and it makes sense to me. I'm just talking more generally on a concept plan where we're usually pushing those comments to the project plan end of it and saying, let's just move forward with what we have.
Right. I was defending both of you in that. I was trying to say Lori's request is very reasonable and that what Mr. Ardmore did wasn't, in my mind, a problem. It just, that's how it unfolded, so.
I appreciate it.
Yeah.
I think those are great thoughts. Anything else? Anybody?
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any objections? Great, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
Bye.
Bye.